Hello, excuse me, everyone. Everyone, please. We're waiting for Jessica, but while we're waiting, why don't we start introductions? So Dave, would you start introductions?
Hi, Dave Woodruff, Mayor Pro Tem, City of Durango.
Megan Graham, Strategic Management, La Plata County.
Matt Salko, La Plata County Commissioner.
My Church, La Plata County Commissioner.
Marsha Porter Norton, and I have some comments after we go around, after the mayor's comments. Thank you, Chair of the La Plata County Board of County Commissioners.
And I'm Chuck Stevens, the county manager.
Kevin Hall, Deputy County Manager.
Aaron Hyder, Assistant City Manager.
Bryce Current, Durango Chief.
Sean Smith, La Plata County Sheriff.
Katie Fox, Emergency Communications Director.
Heidi Wise, City of Durango Acting Deputy Chief Financial Officer.
Bob Bremer, Assistant City Manager, City of Durango.
Jose Madrigal, City Manager.
Hip Coso, City Counselor.
Shirley Gonzalez, City Counselor.
Oops, Gil Díazzi, City of Durango Mayor. Alrighty, so we're gathered here today for a joint study session with the Durango City Council and the La Plata County Commissioners. And we're going to discuss and hear presentations about the 911 Client Service Agreement. So who's up first?
Mayor.
Oh, excuse me.
That's okay.
Thank you, Marsha.
Yeah, I just wanted for the public, I know we have a lot of people online and in the room. I wanted to talk about, the county commissioners recently met in a retreat, and we decided that we wanted to hopefully work with the city in a collaborative way, a more collaborative way than had been occurring. And obviously, the 911 Call Center has been something that we're all proud of. It's been around for years and years. It is an arrangement, either from a client perspective or a collaborative perspective, certainly collaborative with the city and county. And the clients there, as everybody knows, are Durango Fire, Bayfield, Fort Lewis, Upper Pine. The city and county, of course, use it as well, and then Fort Lewis Mesa. In recent discussions dating back about eight years, I think, I could be wrong, eight or 10 years, a need to update the agreement has come about. And I think we wanted to start from a place to see if we have a shared agreement around community safety and around getting to an agreement. And we may need a series of agreements based on the ownership of the land and the building and the way the 911 Call Center is used. The commissioner's desire to get this done soon, and we know you do as well, and we hope that it can be as collaborative as possible, which is why we called this meeting, which has, I think, turned into a study session. So we think having common information is important. Jose, I understand you have a PowerPoint. We would like time at the end of that PowerPoint to hopefully respond and just get to, perhaps if we can, a common set of information. And if we don't have a common set of information, to note where we have differences in facts or history that relate to getting to the future. And so just on that note, we do think we have shared interests. We probably have a lot of positions. Positions are like, this is what I want, and this is what I want. But interests are, here's where we're working together for a call center that continues to serve the people of Durango, but really 58,000 people in the county. So, Mayor, thank you. I just wanted to kind of talk about the genesis of this meeting, where it came from, and certainly have an opportunity to share information after Jose's PowerPoint. Does that make sense to people? Fishers?
Right, thanks.
I'll hand it over to Katie Fox, our 911 Communications Director, who actually put the PowerPoint together. I think Chuck had said that there was a request for understanding the formula and how the formula was derived at. And so Katie's PowerPoint will address that, and then just some other topics that were up on there.
So I think what you're referring to was talking about the cost allocation and the internal services that City of Durango provides?
Okay. Yes.
Awesome, thanks.
So greetings, everyone. My name is Katie Fox. I'm the Emergency Communications Director at Durango Emergency Communications Center. Our city's strategic plan goal is safety and quality of life. Excuse me, up here is our mission, vision, and values, along with the Durango Emergency Communications Center vision. Today, I'm going to outline our center's funding structure. I apologize, Manager Stevens, I don't have specific cost allocation information in this PowerPoint, but I can try and answer the questions that you have as they come up. So DEC has two major revenue streams. Our surcharge allocation from statewide, local, and prepaid wireless surcharges. This revenue is shared with Southern Ute Police Dispatch and allocated to both centers via our local 911 Authority, which is the Emergency Telephone Service Association, or ETSA, of La Plata County. Our second revenue stream is our client agency fees. These fees are for services rendered to our eight, soon to be nine, client agencies. So how do we determine client agency fees? We utilize call volume data from the past three complete years for each agency. So for fiscal year 2026, we're utilizing data from 2022, 2023, and 2024. From that data, we go ahead and calculate agency usage in the form of a percentage. And then we apply that percentage to our approved budget expenditures in order to distribute costs equitably across our client agencies. A few notes, this fee determination methodology is outlined in our Client Services Agreement with our client agencies. The approach, while it's reasonably accurate, does not account for the total workload and services that DEC provides. That said, it is a fairly common combined communications center cost allocation approach. So I did mention the CSA in our previous slide, and Chair Porter Norton also kind of talked about the genesis of where we're at now. Here's just a timeline overview of the creation of our current CSA. A few high-level bullet points. The need has been present for quite a while, a number of years, and was identified as such. Work responsibility and payment structure were identified by all involved parties as important elements to define in the agreement. Both an audit of previous revenues for the center and the creation of a separate fund were requested and then provided. And the CSA was provided to our client agencies for review and feedback multiple times and included an extensive in-person review meeting in May of 2024. After the final draft was sent out in June of '24, excluding the county, we've received signatures from all current client agencies in August or September of 2024. So on this slide is a breakdown of the call for service percentages by client agency for fiscal year 2026. You can see that City of Durango, by way of Durango PD, is our largest client agency, accounting for a little bit over 50% of our call volume. Close behind that is La Plata County Sheriff's Office at 32%, and a distant third from there is Durango Fire Protection District at 7.6%. Our remaining client agencies are going to account for less than 4% each of our call volume. So these percentages will be applied to the 2026 approved budgetary expenditures, less our surcharge eligible expenditures, to determine our 2026 client agency fees for service. Currently, in 2025, La Plata County's bill balance for dispatch services include the January 2025 client agency fee and the February through April council-directed administrative fees. Finally, this graph is just a visual representation of our client agency CFS percentages, again, for 2026. And you can see DPD and La Plata County Sheriff's Office make up the lion's share of that chart. That's the end of my presentation, but happy to field any questions.
Is our out... It's counterintuitive, no, I'm kidding. I think just an elephant in the living room for the city counselors and people in the room is why hasn't La Plata County paid our bill? So I think since we're here and we have all the people, thank you, by the way, for your work. Thank you for all the work there. I've toured it a couple times, it's incredible. And I don't really understand how you do it. It's really incredible to, and all the people in law enforcement. But I think we should just have a civil, on-the-board discussion about why we didn't sign the Client Services Agreement. So that we're, and the purpose of this meeting is to level set around information. And so Chuck, I'm gonna put you on the spot to answer that question. And this isn't a tit-for-tat, it's because we don't want to be having these discussions in the media, we'd rather have it here so that you can ask clarifying questions and we can ask clarifying questions.
Alrighty, that's a good way to start. But like, one of my primary concerns is to make sure that I look out for the benefit of the City of Durango by getting payment.
Absolutely, yep.
Okay, Chuck.
All right, good afternoon. So I think the question that was posed was, you know, why haven't we made any payments to the City of Durango for comm center services in 2025? The short answer, I think, is that the Client Services Agreement that we have not signed had some components in there that the county just couldn't, we just couldn't take it on as a local government, specifically the language that talked about the budgeting and the methodology for budgeting. It essentially created an obligation on the part of the county to have to pay whatever the City of Durango determined as the fees and what they would be. And as any local government, and City of Durango included, I doubt that the City of Durango would have signed an agreement that had that same kind of language in it, because the way we do our budgeting, you know, you can't allocate for future years. And the budget cycle is very structured and time-consuming. If we were to get a bill late in the budget cycle, it would be very difficult for the county to try and react to that and then make an adjustment within our budget, especially when we're in periods of financial distress like the county is in now. So the Client Services Agreement that came out, it had some language in there that frankly was just a non-starter for us. We couldn't, we can't get there on that. And so that's going to be something that we're gonna hopefully be able to negotiate successfully, and I'm confident that we can. Additionally, you know, you saw out there the percentages that the county's about 30% of the user fees, and that's true. And then, of course, that can change too, as growth in the county develops or in Ignacio and Bayfield, those percentages may adjust over time. So those are a snapshot in time. But what's not reflected there is the county's co-ownership of the land and building. And I know when Jose and I have talked about this over the last year, I don't think that there's any disagreement that the county is not enjoying any benefit of ownership for the land and the building. And so our position in the county is, is we would really like to see multiple agreements. We would like to clear up the ownership of the land and the building, because there aren't any foundational documents that we can find. I've looked, I know Jose and his team have looked, and we can't find anything that talks about why we purchased this land together, why we built this building together, other than to use it for the purpose that we've enjoyed since at least 2007. So we would like to clean that up. As our organizations have grown, these informal agreements or lack of agreements probably aren't serving us well anymore. So that's one thing, we would like to clear that up. And then we have tenants in the building. The comm center is a tenant upstairs, and the County Emergency Operations Center is a tenant on the bottom level. And there's no tenant agreements in place. So we think that there needs to be that, an ownership agreement. And then, if we could get over really the major hurdle in the Client Services Agreement, if we could clean up the ownership relationship and the tenant relationship, then the county would be fine with saying, okay, if you want to treat us like any other client agency, then we're happy to do that. But for that language about the budgeting that Jose and I have talked about, and I'm very confident that we can negotiate a solution to that. But that's why we haven't signed it in as brief as I can possibly be.
Okay, excuse me, Chuck, so you're saying the fact that you guys don't know who owns the building, or the land, or the tenant agreements, therefore you don't have to pay?
No, that's not what I'm saying, Mayor. We know who owns it, we own it with the city. We own it together. But there's no documents that define our relationship, that address concerns of ownership that we need to address. That arrangement may have been satisfactory early on, but as our organizations have grown, as our governments have grown, I don't know that we're in a place where that works for us anymore. So we would like to clean that up.
Can I ask a couple?
Alright, thank you.
Yes, Jessica. A couple questions, sorry. You said the budget language that's in the client agreement. So that was received in June 2024. Have you communicated that specific? I know we've talked about the land ownership and the building ownership before. It's been brought up a couple of times, nothing like set that we need to do. But have you made us aware, our team aware, that you were concerned about that budget language?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
And would you say that we would no longer be paying come January 1st if that budget language wasn't cleaned up? Was there a date ever set that like, the county will stop paying this bill come January 1st, 2025, if this isn't cleaned up? No, no, absolutely not, because we haven't signed that agreement. Right. That's the barrier to us signing it. Sure, that makes sense, and we can work through that. But I'm just curious, as you've paid June, July, August, October, November, December, and then out of nowhere, on January 1st, you decide not to pay with no notice? And I was wondering if that was communicated in advance, so we knew like, if we don't come to a decision by January 1st? Like, we had a, you know, you guys gave us, if it's not done, this, you know, the sheriff thing, by this date, you no longer can bring, you know, prisoners to the jail. And we abided by that. But we paid our bills all the way up until that date. And so I was curious if that was ever communicated with us, or just out of nowhere, you didn't pay?
So the answer to your question is, has been communicated, absolutely. Okay, Jose and I have talked about this as recently as last week.
That you weren't gonna pay come January 1st?
No, I'm sorry, I thought your question was, have I communicated to the City of Durango that we have concerns about the language in the Client Services Agreement?
Those are two separate things, in my mind. The Client Services Agreement, we have to come to it. The payment of past services that we've provided.
Right, now, the reason that the county hasn't made any payments in 2025 really go back to the council-directed administrative fees, is what I think I heard Katie say, I tried to jot it down as she was saying it. So council-directed administrative fee, we're not clear on how that fee was determined. And so that's something that we would like to see the methodology behind to figure out. So we got an invoice that said, here's a bill, but the methodology that was laid out, that was established in the 2018 Executive Management Committee protocols and procedures that have guided the operation of the Communication Center since 2018, that laid out that formula. If that was the number that was on the invoice, we would have paid it.
That fee wasn't started until April 1st, or March 1st, February 1st?
February 1st.
So January's bill, even if you're arguing the fee that council-directed, we needed, because there's no commitment, you can move to the Southern Ute Indian Tribe, for example, with a moment's notice, and then we're left with this amazing staff and having to figure out how to, you know, hold in the bag, which is fine, but there's fees usually to that in business. And so the January bill, for example, doesn't include that fee, correct?
I'd have to go back and look, Counselor, I don't know if it does or not.
It's right there.
If the, if the City of Durango wants us to pay according to the methodologies that we've used since 2018, we'll get our finance team to cut a check tomorrow.
I mean...
I mean, that's, I'll commit to that right now.
Alright, I think Marsha wants to say something.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Great questions, I think that's why this interchange is really important, is like, let's unsurface what the real issues are. Mayor, you said something earlier that I just wanted to clarify, and then we can continue this line of thinking, is that, of course, of course, we'll pay. We have to, just like you all do when you read your packets and you negotiate agreements and staff bring you things, you have to know what's behind it. And that's what we're saying. I think our main position is, we want to know how the fees are calculated. And hopefully, we can get there on some kind of resolution around the calculation in terms of the administrative charges. And I really think that's what you all do in your due diligence. You're not gonna pay a bill if you don't know how it's calculated. So that's what our ask is. And then, a number of agreements, I think 2018 is what, seven years ago? That's a long time. And so an agreement that recognizes the land and the building, and then the uses. And so, but we don't, we're not trying to get out of paying.
Well, you know, I underst... Oh, you want to say?
So I just wanted to make sure, I'm not being snarky about that, I'm just saying, we're not trying to get out of paying.
Oh, no, I know you're never snarky. Okay, so basically, you have a disagreement with the land and the building agreement, and then the new, current way that we propose to conduct the new billing.
I think I would summarize it, instead of disagreement, that we are working, and Cheryl and Chuck can, or Jose can explain to the public and the media and all of us, we're not working off an agreement that is sophisticated as we need, we're working off a 2018, what's it called?
It's the management guidelines.
Management guidelines, so...
Management guidelines, but I think one of the parts, just to make sure people know, and it kind of comes back to this side of it, is it never was signed, nor was it ever approved. And so that kind of complicates it even more of going back to something that actually never was agreed to. And the guidelines are quite vague in there. And in there, there's a lot of parts in it where I do even believe that the city still retains budget control as a guideline in there. And so, very difficult, I think, when you look at the different entities and trying to find a Client Services Agreement, something that was brought up to the city's attention when I got here, first and foremost, in regards to concerns, in regards to what happens to the money if it doesn't get spent, what are the policies and, you know, guidelines that go through it? And from a city perspective, we definitely did the best we could. We met with everyone, we're trying to find an agreement that works. It's gonna be very difficult when you have that many entities to find one that works for every one of them. So I do want to commend the work that we did on the outreach to get through that part, understanding that it's gonna be tough, you can't always make everyone completely satisfied with it. So I think, to just make sure I'm clarified with Chuck, I believe the concern was, after the budget year, correct, that in there we could raise, and that was the part where we were talking about, not necessarily what the budget was annually, but you would get that number. But during then, that possibly us raising in the middle of the year would have a significant impact on the county. And I believe we had talked, just Chuck and I, on a conversation that I would be willing to have some portion in there that gives a little bit of flexibility. It says if it was over 5% or 10%, I'd have to get 85% of the Client Service Agreement funders to agree to that. And I think Chuck was pretty good with that, I was pretty good with that, because I don't think that was the intent necessarily. Most of it was just if we had an emergency, something happened that was out of line and the city has to do it, well, we're holding the bag, right? And there was nothing there that was gonna make anyone say like, oh, that's not us. So we did try to provide some flexibility, that's an easy amendment for a Client Services Agreement that I could do and then give to everyone else, because I think it's fair to the other providers as well, that what they get is the same, and move on from that side of it. So I do think there's an easier way to get through that. I just want to make sure that this 2018 agreement, as we're discussing about it, is also known that it wasn't actually formally approved, there are no signatures on it. It's not as concrete as we would like it to be, and that's kind of what started us getting in this conversation. And then even from there, we've tried to remain flexible from the needs of the Client Service Agreements, start our own fund, okay, we put in our own fund, then wanted to be billed actuals, and we went to billing of actuals, and then maybe we didn't want to do that, and went back to budgeting. So from a city's perspective, we have tried to remain flexible to some of the concerns financially and how to do this billing, and we continue to maintain that and continue to want to do that side of it. The administrative fee that was placed on there was 20%, 25%? Gotcha. Was a fee, and I know I sent an email to it, and I need to grab it out, but that's really just because of the month-to-month and not having a commitment. And I think if you look at anything, when you go from a, as simple as a rent, if you do a yearly rent, your rent is this, if you go month-to-month and we don't know exactly what is going to happen, that was us building us some cushion to help. If we were at one point, as I think Counselor Beal said, if the county were to pull out, that we would have some funding to help some of the employees in case we unfortunately had to make decisions so that we weren't having to do it on that portion of it. I also will tell you that, had this conversation with Chuck, just for everyone to know, this is not with any of the other board members of council meetings, it was just Chuck and I, that I do believe that if that was a request, knowing that the county was looking to sign a CSA of going away with that administrative fee, I think that would be something that the council would consider of doing, if that just helps us move forward with it. But at this point, we're in this part of, we're holding a lot of liability right now in our 911 fund, that's a lot of funding that goes to our 911 to fund our employees, which we're all a service organization, Chuck, you know and I know, our number one cost is salaries. And so that's the part that we're looking at. And I do think there's a way forward through most of these issues on that.
I think, I think the city manager, Jose Madrigal, hit on something really important that tied into something I said as well. I think the informal agreements that we've operated under, and Jose brought up the 2018 management guidelines and protocols that we've been using to guide the operations of the comm center, that modified a version from 2007. So this goes back, you know, almost 20 years. They were not signed. But the agreement was presented, it was drafted by the City of Durango, and the agreement was brought to the Executive Management Committee, where it was introduced by the police chief. And the voting members of the EMC all took an affirmative vote and unanimously passed it. And that's what's guided our operations all these years. And so when I say, I think our organizations have grown to where we need more formal agreements, this is, we wouldn't be here if we had more formal agreements. So we are in violence agreement, that we need something new. That's why the county has been, Jose mentioned it, when he first got here, I was the one knocking on his door saying, hey, we would really like to formalize this agreement for a number of reasons, not the least of which was that the county recognized that the city was providing internal services and was not being compensated adequately for that. The 2018 agreement says that there'll be a $3,000 flat fee from the user agencies. Well, that doesn't adequately compensate, I don't think, the city for its IT support, for its HR support, for its legal analysis, for all of the internal services that the city provides to the comm center. So we brought that forward and said, we don't think this agreement that we've been operating under successfully is adequate moving forward, and we would really like to update that. And then you hit on some of the other reasons about accountability and transparency of the funds, which we've solved. And I think Jose and I, thanked him many times publicly for that, for solving those. Because now we do have transparency and accountability of the funds. And we can go back to our constituents and say, here's where your money's going. So that's, those are all good things.
Okay, so I think we've talked about this enough. So we got a list going, what they think that we need to add to the agreement. And did you have something to say, Marsha? You look like you wanted to talk.
I just want to see if my fellow commissioners have anything to say, or anybody else. I think that, yeah, I think like, setting out what we need to do. We're willing to pay the administrative fee, let's get behind how we calculate it. Chuck just said, we know you all do an incredible amount of work, IT and HR and all of it. So what's that? A land agreement, a tenant agreement, and then the Client Services Agreement. So it's phasing it out, I think, I think there might be general agreement here that 2018 is a long time and it needs updated, maybe that's a place to start. And then, and then phase out these different things, knowing full well that you have your costs, but we also have an interest in the building. You know, we own...
Yeah, if I can clarify, there's different types of fees that we're discussing. So there's an annual service fee. And the administrative fees to the county frankly feels like a premium that city council has added, and we don't know why.
Cheryl, Cheryl, could you just give a list without any editorial, like the premium word? I didn't appreciate that.
I'm just trying to be frank to move the negotiations along. But part of our problem with the customer service agreement is we don't view ourselves as a customer, we view ourselves as partners with the City of Durango in operation of the center. And we want it to be a fair partnership. And under the 2018 document, one of the protections that is in there is that there is an executive management committee. And for the annual service fee to increase and be assessed, it has to be approved by four out of five of the individuals on the executive committee. We feel like that adds protection about the reasonableness of the fee and our ability to budget for it. What we're concerned about is what has happened with this administrative fee, where it is unilaterally imposed without any input from the county or even our ability to budget for it. So we want a reasonable service fee that is based on the actual costs, but this unilateral imposition of an administrative fee or any other types of things we are unable to predict or even know is going to be turned back into the comm center is a problem for us.
Alrighty, thank you.
I want to keep going back to the administrative fee, and when it came in up February 1st. I think Jessica had a really good question, that January 1st came and went. And when was it discussed that we were not going to make a payment to the city for services rendered?
And when was it discussed that we were not going to make a payment to the city for services rendered be, for the, for the month of January? Because January had nothing to do with this administrative fee conversation.
Councillor, thank you for the opportunity to clarify. So the January calculations still were not consistent with the 2018 agreement because it added additional cost allocations for the internal services that the city of Durango provide. But we haven't seen the methodology for, for how those were determined. That's why at the beginning of this meeting, I said, oh, are we going to see the methodology? Because that's what, that's what we've been asking for is we need to see how it's been.
How was January different from December, November and October previous?
There was, in November, December, there was a $3,000 flat fee for the user agencies. And then in the January billing, the cost allocation model was introduced that, that I, I'm not sure how that has been calculated.
I've got the minutes from our EMC board meeting from August 2nd, 2024. And that's when Katie provided kind of the 2025 budget expenditures. And that discussion of cost allocation for city services was discussed at that point, transitioning from the $3,000 user fee from the guidelines to a ratio that finance came up with, we charge internally for enterprise funds to calculate what that would be. And that's $82,000 a year is what that 2025 budget proposal was going to be. And that's going to be split out based off of the percentages, just like everything else is for user amounts. So even like us at the city of Durango with the police department, we'd be paying 52.4% of that, of that $82,000 when it comes into it. So I think we're kind of mixing an administrative fee with what the cost allocation fee that was built into the CSA.
Was the county a part of that conversation? Were they present at that meeting? So this isn't a surprise.
Was there pushback to that? Sorry.
I don't remember all those specifics because we have meetings frequently at that time. But we did discuss it and how it was broken down. Our budget team, I think it was Devin that came in and explained exactly what that cost allocation was and what services are going to be provided for, which includes, you know, just the same internal one we use. I believe it's the same model that you all used too, is what Devin pointed out. It's going to be for HR, payroll, legal, IT, finance, so on and so forth.
Right. Since you have the minutes open, I don't recall a vote being taken though. And was that passed with a four-fifth majority?
That was the presentation. I don't have the minutes per se, but this was the agenda for that meeting.
Sorry. Okay, so we have that on our topic for a point that has to be detailed in whatever agreement or contract we have up. Do you have any more topics?
I, I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Question and it wasn't, I didn't answer it. So you mentioned that the county has services in the bottom level of the building.
Right, that's our emergency operations center.
Okay, so and that's all county, the county uses it, the county in the building.
Right.
And the city has the 911 center up above. But we don't have any city operations that aren't the 911 operation in this building. So.
It's not, yeah.
So 911 up top and the county on the bottom. And so we split the building owner, like the building. And then do we split any upgrades? So if we have to put on a new roof or we have a new HVAC, is that 50/50 since we own the building 50/50? Or is that, do you pay 30 and we pay?
I can speak to that. Yeah, generally facility upgrades and building maintenance are budgeted out of our city of Durango budget. So it's the client agency fees that pay for that, unless it's an ETSA surcharge eligible expenditure.
So we own the building 50/50, but we pay, we pay for everything out of the 911 client services.
County ARPA funds went to pay for the HVAC.
Yeah, we, we bought an HVAC system for the building.
Like there's a little bit of a gentleman's agreement that we are changing some stuff back and forth.
So Councillor Beal, you, you've landed exactly where we've been for the last few years. It's like you're asking questions that Jose and I have talked about. And I've used the scenario with Jose, like if we get a heavy snowstorm and the roof collapses, we, we know that we're going to pay for it. We have to have a roof on the comm center. We can certainly go ask the other client agencies that they'd be willing to contribute. And now maybe there's a better mechanism with the client services agreement that's been codified. But, but prior to that, we knew we were going to pay that bill. And how it was going to be split, we didn't know. We assumed 50/50. I mean, that would have been my going imposition, right? But that, that's one of the, the primary drivers for why we wanted to update the agreement and clearly identify in an equitable way.
Totally, and I agree. And I think that that is definitely where we should, I think, you know, no one is saying that we shouldn't move forward in a productive manner. And I think we all are on board with it. This is a, a critical part of our community. There's in no way will we ever say, me as one councillor, that I would ever say, they haven't paid their bill and we've done services them for four months. We're not like, until they pay their bill. Like no, if someone calls in the county and needs help, that is our responsibility as, as city councillors, as county commissioners going forward. But my concern is that from 2020 to June, June of 2024, there's been, we've been working on trying to get an agreement, right?
Right.
And it hasn't been me and it hasn't been you in those meetings, which that's not supposed to be really necessarily our role. But they've been happening. And so my concern is if they've been happening and in August, you're sitting in a meeting as the county, whether it's Cheryl or you or whoever, and you're listening to this. And now all of a sudden it's coming to a head and we're not getting payment. Why? Why over four years of meetings and trying to figure this out? Why is it right now, is it like, this is how it has to be and we're not paying our bill? It just seems so drastic. And like, why wasn't some of this talked about ahead of time and communicated? Like, we don't agree with this. It has, this has to change. Sending a letter saying, we're really concerned with this part of it. Why can't this get fixed? And us either explaining why it can't get fixed. I mean, I did some light research, called some like areas of 911 services. I mean, I would argue we're not charging enough, that maybe we need better systems, we need better trainings or something, because our rates are real low compared to some other people in places that I've called. And so if we're going to do this agreement and do it right, well, maybe we should reevaluate everything to make sure that we're doing on standard. Like why do it if we're not going to do it right? If, if it's not good enough the way it is?
I'm, I'm not sure we need to keep layering more stuff on here. I think, I, I'm not saying that it's not a good point, but it certainly is not the goal of this conversation is to add anything more to it. It feels to me like we've got, we're very aligned on three agreements, getting renegotiated and getting formalized. Nobody wants 2018 to be 2026 at this point. So it feels to me like that's solved at this point. It also sounds like the county has no problem paying the rate that was last year. Pay that and we will discuss the administrative fee that's on top of that. That gets the city, the majority of the money that we feel we need to run for operations from my perspective. And we can continue a discussion on the administrative side in this room or further on. But let's start finding the compromises that we can start agreeing on out of this meeting and then work on the next stuff, I, I think.
All righty, does anybody have any response to what Kip just suggested?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with the councillor on this, more than happy with that direction. We need to work on those agreements. It sounds like we're all aligned, we need to get those done. For the pay, for me myself, I spoke to you before in the past of just like, let's, what are those fees? How is that increased? Why is it increased? And then we can work on our budget and sort that out. But until then, that's how I, I agree with you councillor.
And Clyde?
I was just going to say, I think this is some good progress. And getting this sorted out and set it divided into the issues, we can work on it. It's not a big elephant to swallow. So I think we can get the audit and I'm encouraged. Thank you.
Sheriff Smith wanted to talk, but I will just say that, yeah, I, I think we're here so we're looking to the future. We can say what, what happened from 20 to 24 and all these discussions and all of that. And I think I'm hearing a desire on the part of both parties to really dig into those fees and what are we paying for and understand them. And also you made the point, Councillor Beal, about the building. That's why we need a building agreement. You know, I can tell you as one commissioner, if something would happen, goodness forbid the, this snow took the roof down. Of course, we would want to like immediately call you and say, how do we, how do we get this up and going again? So we're very much into the center and all of that, and I think we can line these agreements out. But Sheriff Smith, Mayor?
All righty, wait, Julie?
Okay, thank you. So just for clarity, I'm understanding that there's three issues at hand. There's one related to the leasing of the facility. There's one related to the services provided and then perhaps related to technology. Is there something else that I'm missing? And other tenants. So that's also related to the leases, right, to the facility. So just, you will allow me a little bit of time, given that I'm new. So to Jose, who is, who is responsible for, from our end, the building and the, the leasing and the tenants and the, who's responsible for that?
So if we're going to talk about creating a lease that's going to be legal, who would do it? Our facilities is managed under Jason Jones, he's in our finance department. Just a couple of things, in the 2018 management guidelines for operations and maintenance responsibility, it does say the city of Durango shall be responsible for the operations and maintenance of the land and facility. Funding for these functions shall be included in the annual budget and share proportionally among the users. So that kind of talks about if that guidelines to which we're moving away from says that, that that's in our responsibility. The only thing, I just did a clarifying question.
Well, I, I guess, so if I may, so, so that's, that's an issue. I mean, the, the issue is currently the building, the leases, the maintenance of the physical space. That's, is that a debate?
I don't know if it's absolutely a debate. I think it's just something we want to get finalized because it's never been something that Chuck and I have been in fighting about, like this needs to be done, is this going to be done? How are we going to do it? It's just, how do we finalize that and memorialize it?
Okay, so some resolution to the physical space. Separately, a resolution on payment for service, like fee for service.
That's the bigger one, because then that's the part of clarification. Because if we go back to what they were paying for last year in that formula, we'll have a couple of issues from a city perspective. You're going to have other agencies who signed a client services agreement that are paying that, saying, well, if they're not going to pay for it, why am I not going to pay for it? And then it's going to have a budget gap funding wise.
But just so that I understand, because it seems like it's all getting mixed up as if it were one issue. It seems like they're all separate issues. So we have an issue for the facilities and the building, a separate issue for how it's funded and paid for a fee of service. Right, like services provided, there's a concern there. And then a separate issue regard, well, it hasn't really been mentioned, so maybe I'll just leave it right there. So it's two issues that need to be, and they're really separate issues as I understand them.
I would probably say that's probably more for the county. They're, they, I mean, I'm not, they're the ones that have the issues, I don't. So I don't want to say that those are the issues and then Chuck's like, no, those aren't it.
The reason for the meeting today, because that's where, I mean, I'm still a little bit, I'm just trying to understand, because Marcia, you requested this meeting, right?
We did, the three commissioners did.
So, so you requested the meeting so we could get some clarity.
Right.
And, and typically, I, I know that there are, there's no lawyers here, is it?
There is.
Yeah, they can't go anywhere.
North County Commissioner and everyone who's.
Okay, that you'll forgive me, I'm still, you know.
We're all meeting each other.
Who's all sitting in the room so that I can understand what, like, how, why, what, to where you've come from when you're speaking? So thank you for, for clarifying that. So, and, and typically for, for the last many years until just 2025, things have been okay or things have been moving. But now we've just decided as a group that things need to be formalized. Is that, am I, do I have that part right?
I, well, Mayor.
Or is it related?
Okay, so the question here is that Chuck and Jose have concerns about the ownership of the building. And then some of the services provided plus the, was it the service fee?
I'll, I'll just jump in. I think it's the cost, the cost allocation for the city services, for internal city services. Am I correct? Previously, it's been $3,000 a year for each client agency across the board. In 2025, we moved to a full cost allocation for internal services, which raised it from $21,000 for all of our client agencies to, for 2025, it was $102,000. I do want to point out that we did work our budget last year for a $500,000 shift over to our surcharge eligible expenditures to cut that $500,000 out of the city of Durango client agency budget to provide a little bit of relief for that increase. So that was a $32,000 increase, or I'm sorry, a $29,000 increase for the county. But, you know, again, we moved $500,000 to whatever, 32% of that and in an effort to kind of keep those costs down for you all.
All righty, thank you, Katie. Okay, so it's, it's in flux right now and these are major concerns that we should work through. But just one moment, Sheriff wanted to say something.
Thank you, Mayor. I think to speak to Councillor Woodruff and Councillor Beal, I'm sorry, Mayor Potem Woodruff and Councillor Beal's concerns. One of the things that hasn't been brought up, there's never been a monthly billing before. It's always been quarterly in the past. Last month, I was working with our finance department so that we could follow historical practice while we're working through these issues. And we were trying to break down, based on all the emails that we had, exactly what those numbers looked like. Because we had historically always had quarterly billing. As the longest, longest serving person who's been in the executive management committee 10 years now and, and participating in these discussions in earnest since 2008 for the sheriff's office, I have a long tenure there. What I can tell you is that the previous agreements, even though they aren't signed and formalized, it's what we've operated off of historically. And both of the 2018 and the agreement prior to that gave two votes to the city and two votes to the county and then one vote to a fire department at large to kind of balance the equation. Not get shifting all of the responsibility for this comm center onto the city of Durango to direct and manage and do those things. That, I think that was reflective, even though we don't have documents, that's the historical piece going back. It's reflective of the fact that we were in a partnership. We needed the fire department at large vote to break any kind of a tie there, but we were in a partnership together. And that's what those previous agreements stated, and that's how we've operated ever since. So this client services agreement is very foreign to us because it's taking away all of that and putting it in one, one ball over here in the city's court. And, and that's part of the challenge we've had. But I was working with our finance department last month to come up with a quarterly payment that would have matched what we've done historically, based on how things, because we haven't worked out the new agreement yet. I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
Um, Mayor, thank you. Thanks for that, Sheriff Smith. So am I understanding correctly, I, I believe that, first of all, to get to your question, Councillor Gonzalez of why are we here? Just to refine, I think exactly what's happening is why we're here. Is so that we can talk, we can get the things out in the open, we can show frankly our community that we can have tough conversations, we can disagree with each other, we can maybe think of things differently and it doesn't have to go to levels, other levels. So that's why we're here. And I, I believe this has been very productive. And I think we're, I think we're uncovering the ball of yarn this is, how complicated it is. And what I am hearing is that we do have a willingness among ourselves, we're not, we don't have to negotiate it out in public. That's why we have these very highly qualified managers and finance folks, but willingness to work on this. We need varying agreements. One isn't going to do it. We are of the impression and position, if you will, that we have a common interest in being partners as the sheriff very eloquently lined out, but we're different than the other client service entities. We're different because of the building ownership and the fact, the first floor and so the tenant agreement, absolutely. We need to understand where the numbers are coming from. Please don't think we're trying to nickel and dime you. We're not trying to nickel and dime you and say, we're going to come in and not pay this 5,000 and oh, you guys, you know, that's not, that's not what this is about. We just want to understand it. And that's no different than what we would do if you sign your rental agreement or your mortgage or your car payment. We just want to understand it and agree to it. And then I, I think we, you know, the sooner that we can get this formalized, and as Sheriff Smith said, we, you know, to continue to be a partner in this, this has worked great for many, many years for many, many, many people. So I don't know if that all feels like sort of broad level concepts that, that you all can agree with, knowing there's some past, it seems like that has been confusing slash drug on, frankly. But does that get to what you were saying, councillor and Mayor and councillor Coso and Beal?
Go ahead.
I guess really all of you, the entire council.
Oh, I, I think it, for me, it does give some clarity as to, I mean, I, I didn't mean to say why are we here, but just understanding a little bit, because I, I think, I, I just understand these to be separate, sort of separate issues that have to be addressed. And they've been all presented as if it's one thing. And I think it's not. I think there's separate issues that have to be resolved. And so I just felt like I needed to get a little clarity on really the, exactly the issues at hand. So I appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioners, I would just add, you didn't necessarily mention paying the underlying fee that. that would have been a normal, normal payment in 2024. So I think it's, it's important that that happens soon. We've got incurred costs and liabilities that we need to catch up on. I would also throw in there, I would love to hear some kind of timeline that we expect things to be resolved. We don't want to just say there's no admin fee for six and eight months while we're negotiating out. So those are the only two modifications I'd say, but otherwise, yes.
All right, Dave, do you have any thoughts?
Oh, I've got lots, Mayor. Constructive, yes, ma'am. I, I feel like we've, we've got enough historical narrative that we can move forward. Does anybody have any other comments or questions about what happened previously? Because right now, whether or not it was quarterly or monthly, if it was quarterly, we would have gotten our payment on April 1st. So to me, it doesn't make, it doesn't matter what happened before. I'm just ready to move forward. So do we agree on the percentages? Board of County Commissioners, like the 52, 32, I mean, are we in agreement?
That's, I'm, well, I'm going to actually pause you there. Those are 2026 numbers. I can get the agreed upon 2025 numbers out to, to everyone if, if needed, but these are for next fiscal year.
But I think at a macro level, we agree with the methodology that's been in place since 2018, which is the three-year average of the call volume.
Okay. So then I think, well, I understand, Katie, and please correct me, that these percentages were then constructed upon the administrative, the IT costs, and then those sort of more ancillary costs that, that we kind of took on ourselves. And then we were reallocating those percentages on that, that new administrative kind of overview of how much it took operation. Is that correct?
Right. So the numbers, the percentages up on the PowerPoint are for 2026 fiscal year. The budget presentation that I provided to our client agencies last year included CFS percentages with the methodology that Manager Stevens just referred to, that we are in agreement for, as I understand it. And the expenditures for the 2025 fiscal year did include the cost allocation, like every other special revenue fund or enterprise fund in the city, to the city for internal city services, and will be included moving forward.
Okay. So it sounds like there's some more agreement in terms of like the percentages of how that, are there questions around how we get that administrative kind of budget for, for the year? Is that, I'm trying to get down to the crux of where we're at here.
I think, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Uh, I believe what Cheryl said earlier that we have to work out. I don't know that we have to do it here, but maybe we can agree to have a commitment to work it out. Is there's the service fee and then the administrative fee. So that's what we just need to understand. What are those two things? Again, not at all disputing your IT, all your HR, all of that. We said that. This is the third time we've said that. But it's not mixing apples and oranges with what's that percentage fee that was discussed that was up there? And then the, did I say that correctly?
Yeah, we just need an understanding of the cost allocation. And then if we have a signed agreement, I assume we don't need this 20% administrative fee. So we're willing to draft the documents for the real estate aspects for review by the city. And on the service agreement, if we can get an explanation about the fees, we can also put that in there. The customer service agreement that has been given to the other parties is difficult for us to work with. It would come back with a lot of red lines because we are in a different position. So we will, we're also willing to draft a version that works for La Plata County. And I think a lot of what Jose said is if we can have that sort of super majority approval of that number, that will get us over a major hump. If it's not just a unilateral action, but a voted on arrangement, I think that's like one of our biggest stumbling blocks right now.
All righty, you know, I, I understand your perspective of wanting to draft all these documents, but I would prefer that our lawyers go ahead and draft those documents because we have to make sure they're reflective of the other partners dealing with 911. You know, and the real estate document, you know, I think that needs to be something separate because since there is confusion with ownership of the building, maybe we're the owners, you know? I don't know. Do you guys have like 49?
We're, we're tenants in common, and so we own it 50/50.
Okay.
And, you know, I think it's understandable for the other parties why the agreement with, between the city and county might be different than their agreement. It, it has been the way that the city and the county boys conducted themselves. And I don't know that there would be a lot of objections. They are in fact customers of the service. The county is the city's partner. And so we're looking for more of a partnership.
So that needs to go into the formation document.
I'm sorry.
That, that relationship needs to go into the, one of the formation documents.
Right, correct, yes.
Can we, can we clarify, like, what does that partnership mean to you guys? Like, what, can we add some clarifying language to like what partnership means? Because I'm trying to figure out, how does that, how does that work with like the, because we're talking about the building being separate. But we're talking about the, the client services agreement being separate, but we're, we're still trying to intermingle the two.
Yeah.
So what does partnership mean from you guys' standpoint?
I think we view it similar to how we do the airport. There was a time when, and the airport's an enterprise fund, so financially it's cleaner. But there was a time when La Plata County ran the airport and they were county employees, not city employees. And then there was a point where it made sense to transition that. We feel similarly about the 911. If there was a point where it made sense for it to transition to La Plata County, we're the partner. We would do that. The city and the county have the freedom to determine what works best for the community as a whole. None of these other entities, they're just provided a service. We are, we are the backstop for the city if needed. We are your redundancy. You know, we have a much more substantial role.
Well, let's don't get too overzealous about being a backstop. I think where we need to start at is the fact that if we're tenants in common, we're co-owners of the building.
Right.
That's number one, that we have to come to what those agreements would be. So that should be separate, and then we'll move on to the, the client service agreement. Can we agree to that?
Yes, and as, as Counselor Coso very astutely pointed out, determining based on the, the fees paid last year, so we, we get you paid. But then understanding the difference between what you're charging around the service fee and the administrative fee. So that we're just really clear on that.
Yeah, that has to be an action item that the council has to take action on, and you can't, we can't just like get rid of that fee for you. And so I think what Counselor Coso was trying to say is that, could you make an in-faith payment? And saying, hey, we're not going to leave you $285,000 in the whole city of Durango. We're going to do an in-faith payment, but those administrative fees were not, he's not, he didn't say we'd waive them or they were going away. He was saying that, like, just make an in-faith payment, and we can explain to you and maybe go through the meeting minutes in August and like, say, okay, this is for IT, and this is for HR, and this is for this, and this is what those are for. The 20% fee, that's something separate. That's because we're on a month-to-month basis with you, and you could piece out at any time, and we'd be stuck holding the bag. So that fee is separate, and that would go away when we get an agreement. Does that make sense? What I'm trying to say? But we can't say that you are not paying those fees in this meeting without getting counselor consensus.
Yeah, they're negotiable, but.
Okay, Sean has something to add.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to clarify, I think that's why County Manager Stevens asked, was there a vote taken at that meeting? The notes were not reflective of a vote. Historically, those things were brought to the executive management committee to make a vote. If a vote didn't happen, then those fees couldn't be imposed unilaterally by the city. That's a new step because of the movement towards this client services agreement and shifting this partnership arrangement. So I, I think there's some dispute over that, but we can work it out. Secondly, back to your partnership piece, nobody here probably knows that during COVID, when the center became compromised by COVID, because too many dispatchers got it, I got a call from Suzanne, who was the director at the time. I spent a long weekend with my vehicle upfitter as we ordered in a bunch of things that we could get through Amazon quickly, and we converted my emergency communications van into the city's backup dispatch center. To this day, it is still tested monthly to be the city's backup dispatch center. I, prior to all of this kind of falling apart, I was in, in discussions with Katie about providing space in the sheriff's office to be a physical indoor backup. We are trying to be your partner in every way and be that backstop that was just described. So, so there, there's a much deeper piece there than just this disagreement over the language of, of the client services agreement, just so you.
Okay, thank you.
Claire, Claire, are you looking at me? Clarifying question. So Counselor Buell, are you saying, when you say in-faith payment, are you saying based on the 2024 rates? Pay you on those rates as, as Counselor Coso suggested? I don't think we have a problem with that. Because that number, I hear you about cash flow. I hear you about you've been out, hear you on that. I think we're all in agreement there. I think if the administrative fee was placed on because we weren't paying, did I hear that?
The administrative fee was just because of month-to-month.
Okay.
There's a lot of administrations. I want to make sure that, that 20% was because we're on a, we don't have an agreement.
Okay, and that was frustrating for you, I hear, and you weren't sure what was going to happen. So I hear that's frustrating. So I hear the administrative fee goes away. I hear that if.
Possibly.
No, I, I don't think.
Yeah, right, 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 right. Exactly. If we have a signed agreement, which I think we're agreeing to.
I think that could be a negotiating point, but it's not going away.
Yeah, okay, all right. So I want to use my words carefully. And then I think what, where you were going, Mayor, if I'm understanding, or somebody was here, I'm kind of losing track of the threads, I'm sorry. But just this idea of carving out, I don't know who words it, but like, we're a partner because we want to be a full partner. And we're not, we're not like the other entities. We're not saying we're better than, that's not what we're saying. It's just, we're different than all of the other people up there. They are clients and we are partners. And if we can understand that and get clear on that and say, what does it mean? I, I think we'll be further down the road.
All righty, I, I understand what you're saying, but you know, I understand you're a partner in the real estate tenant in common.
Right, right.
I think that we should get that document settled up, and then we can move on to what our relationships are between us. But the major things are that we understand what has been spoken here and probably go ahead and go forward with, I don't know if we're going to do committee work or just do a memo to everybody, this is what we discussed, and then maybe set up something to move forward on this.
Don't know when Chuck transitions out on this one, but it's definitely something we can, I can work with Chuck, and then we transition over to Kevin and continuing to work on the spirit of some of the things that we think that we could possibly then get to a level to present to prospective boards of, and maybe in agreement to, to make a step and move forward. But I think we, there's still questions to go through. There's still discussions about how this will work and how it goes through. And there's just things I can, I mean, I don't want to deal here. I can just have those conversations with Chuck easily of, or Kevin of like, here's the concerns that we would have. Here are some that we want to wrap up and we want to move forward, and I think we can continue to do that. We had a valued relationship with Chuck, and I'm sure I'll have the same type of relationship with Kevin, that we have frank conversations and we'll get it done. But it just may take some time. I, I do think that any explanation on administrative fees, on service fees, et cetera, are all going to be wrapped into the agreements as well. So a presentation to the commissioners, a presentation to the counselors on what those fees are intended to be is, I think, a great first step to get everybody on the same wavelength on what is potentially the most controversial issue, and then proceed from there.
And I think, you know, like you were saying, that this partnership and you're more than just maybe what the, you know, what is it, 7, 10% of? And you, and you are, and we, and we are a partner together. But we have, regardless of, you know, your good faith and your partner, and you're covering us in COVID, or, I mean, it benefits you as well.
Right.
Whatever's during COVID, and it benefits us to be a part of this. There is a financial piece to this, and Katie's good, but she's not making the city millions off this 911 comm center. We're not making money off of this. And so it was split up in the service agreement that everyone signed on to, except for you guys, based on this percentage. And so if, is, is that what you're thinking, that you shouldn't have to pay as much?
No, that's not, no.
The other?
No, not at all.
I just want to, I've been like.
Not at all.
I was trying to get to the crux of like, the budget language and like what you're, what you're wanting with this. You know, because you saved us in COVID or because we're partners, like what is the expectation there? Is it budget? Is it money? Or is it, like, what is the expectation, I guess?
I'm going to turn this over to Chuck, but I'm going to answer it, and we can see if you have any. We are not trying to get out of, sorry. I'm not nervous. I just all of a sudden have allergies in my throat. We're not trying to get out of paying our fair share. That is not the way the county does business. We're not trying to stiff you. We're not trying to go back on some obscure thing and say, well, we're using this so we pay 10,000 less a month. That is petty, and that is not in the best interest of where I think our shared interests are, which is community safety. And you all have been to the 911 center, I'm sure, and you see what they do every day. It's literally life-saving. We, we wouldn't gamble in that way. I think what we're having, this is a really good conversation today. I think we need to understand definitions. Already, our heads are going, you know, little bubbles over people's heads of like administrative fee, service fee, client service fee. We need to understand what those are and how you derived them. That might be bad grammar, how you came up with that.
Sure.
So if you're saying, all of these entities, you owe us this, we just want to know how. The formula around the calls, three years, no problem with that. So it's not about, we're trying to nickel and dime you. We're not. We have gotten tripped up because we have an agreement that was a gentleman, maybe there were some women in there, handshake, really. And, and minutes, and a, a executive management team. It needs to be cleaned up. It needs to be formalized. It needs to recognize that we're an owner in the property. It needs to recognize we're a tenant, and we need to understand what those, those charges are. But we know it's an expensive service. We know, we're not, we're not trying to get out of paying it. It's not, it's, we are, I mean, it's very widely known, our budget is stressed based on what the state legislature did around assessment rates. But we're not trying to, I mean, this is, you know, community safety is half of our general fund. So we will prioritize community safety. Does that help answer the question? Yeah, but I'm glad you, I'm glad you asked that question because other people in the public may wonder like, why is La Plata County having these issues? It's not because we're trying to, to, to get out of payment. Commissioners?
Okay, well.
And that's an easy one that we can have our finance send you our cost allocation, because it's what's charged to every department in our city for the services, and I'll detail how we get to that.
And we also get that. We do cost allocation for projects that come through the county, so it's not a premise.
Thank you, Marcia.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mayor.
I appreciate your input, but I've got one favor to ask Chuck. Could you briefly just describe what you would like to get in this negotiation for the contract? We're going to have the tenants in common, separate contract, and then what would you like to see? And keep it short, just give us a list.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity. I think the biggest barrier, if we could break down, we would be able to get to a negotiated agreement very quickly, is what we've talked about here, is if there were some kind of mechanism for the service agencies to have a voice in the budgeting process so that, that nobody is presented with, with a, with a price tag that they weren't able to reasonably anticipate, and then they have to go back and put it into their budgets. That's the short answer. I, I would love if you could give me some latitude, just to go on for another minute.
Okay, go ahead. Let's hear it.
So, so the governance model that we've used from 2018, the, the 2018 document that we've used to govern it. When Jose came on board, what, what I presented to him and what we discussed at the time was a new governance document. We wanted a governance document so that the, the executive management committee that had been operating successfully for all these years, with the two votes, two votes, and then the tiebreaker with the largest fire district, which is DFPD. We wanted to, to create a new governance mechanism and replace the old document and get it codified and memorialized. Those conversations didn't materialize, and what we were presented was a client services agreement, which stripped the ability of the client service agencies, not just the county, but all of them, to have any voice in the budgeting process. And that's the biggest, that's the biggest hurdle. And if we can get over that through, through the creative idea that Jose has suggested, I think we can, we can work the rest of it. The rest of it was really minor compared to that one central issue. Thank you.
All righty, that's real clear. Thank you. Are there any other points that anybody else wants to bring up?
I wouldn't mind.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. What are you all hoping to accomplish with the tenant agreement? You know, what does that spell out for you all in terms of, is there, is there money exchanging hands? What, what do you, I just want to know like kind of what, what the goal is with the tenant agreement.
Mayor Pro Tim Woodruff, good fences make good neighbors. And if we can just have those tenant agreements in place, I think it would clean up a lot of the, of the, believe it or not, in the past, over the past few years, we've, we've had conflict at the comm center over trash pickup, snow removal in the parking lot. It wasn't getting done. It wasn't getting done on the lower lot, it was getting done on the upper lot, trash wasn't getting picked up. I mean, and when this would escalate to me, and I have to call Jose, and I'm like, hey, Jose, like, you guys have a trash service, can we solve this? And he's like on it, right? We just want to clean that up. Good fences make good neighbors, no money changing hands.
Alrighty.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Okay, Jose, do you have any, anything you want to add?
Absolutely, I'm glad you gave me, I've got about a 20-minute speech, just kidding, just kidding. No, other than I'm fully committed to work with the county administration to get somewhere where I think we can get to. It's growing pains, and we'll figure it out.
Excellent, well, do we have any other, Clyde?
Yeah, I'd just like to add, I think this is indicative of the growing pains of the county, the population is increasing of the city. You're expanding, population density in the unincorporated areas is growing. We saw a lot of influx during COVID, and we've matured as organizations over the last 10 years. I think moving forward, this is a good indication of trying to work out, and I, I like the idea of mending fences, good fences make good neighbors. So, it's just part of the growing, thank you.
You bet. Is everybody good? Okay.
Well, I, Mayor, I just want to say thank you. I think this is a really great meeting, and I think that we, you know, we should do this more often. No, I'm just kidding, but, um, you know, like, as issues come up, just really, really be able to meet and, and figure out where we're not understanding, and where we need to delve deeper. And, you know, again, Katie, thank you for your work, and all the people out there, and, um, so, yeah, I just really appreciate that. And we had coffee, as you know, last week, that was great, too. I know some of you couldn't make it, but we were thinking it's a, it's a monthly or quarterly affair, and it was noticed, just so everybody knows. And, um, yeah, we had some good bacon and eggs and coffee, and, um, really just building those partnerships and relationships for our community, so, thank you.
Just to tack on, we've got more things coming.
Yes.
We've got wildfire issues, we've got all kinds of stuff, so the, the better we do it, partnerships and working this way, the better for everybody. It's like wildfire issues, what are you, I mean, what are you talking about?
Alrighty, so unless there's somebody else who wants to make another comment, we're adjourned.